Go ahead and get started. Good evening, I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Treasurer Corstang.
Here.
Trustee Nordeik.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerks Slater.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance in the flag of the United States of America to the Republic where it stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Article three, before we approve tonight's agenda, we have several modifications. First, the first two have to do with the consent agenda. Article six. First, A2 Planning Commission, approval of those meeting minutes. The date should be actually November 18th, 2024. As written, it's October 21st. So that change needs to be noted. Same minutes, just different date. And then next, B2, the Treasurers Report, it should be labeled Financial Statements, still for November 2024, but change that. Then lastly, the final item of new business. 003 2025. Premature for tonight's meeting, so I'm going to make a motion that those three modifications be, with those two, the first two edits being made, and then a motion to approve the agenda with also the removal of item 003 2025. We'll see, still be proceeding with it, but presented, presentation tonight, excuse me, is premature.
Support.
Is there a second?
You need to motion.
What did I, is there a third?
No, she said she.
Sorry, I'll make the motion, got it. Thank you, Trustee Nordhook. That was a motion by Supervisor Lesbrunz to amend the agenda with those two edits, and then also the removal of the final new item of business, supported by Trustee Nordhook. All in favor?
I do, I spoke very loud. I, is that better?
No, I thought you were saying like, didn't agree.
I'm fine.
Any opposed?
I would not complain about a shorter meeting.
Motion carried. Having no presentations tonight, we'll move on to Article five, which is the first round of public comment. Now is the time for anyone in the public to comment on any items that are scheduled for tonight's agenda. Specifically, now is the time to comment about the potential purchases of new equipment for parks and facilities, and also a special use permit that has been applied to, from the owner of 3,700 Craft Avenue in the Light Industrial District. See if anyone in person has comments, and then also virtually. Approval of consent agenda, Article six. Is there discussion or a motion? Make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstang, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve tonight's consent agenda with the following two edits previously stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, Article seven, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid tomorrow, January 9. Discussion or?
Motion to approve financial actions.
Shipley supports.
Motion by Treasurer Corstang, supported by Trustee Shipley, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, first item of Article nine, 001 2025. Consider approval of equipment purchase for parks and facilities. Manager Smith, I'll turn it over to you, and if you want Director, you want to add something and be bored, we hear from Director Zwick.
Yes. So at the December 11th, for trustees meeting, we had a presentation in regards to the master plan for Rec Park. And out of that conversation and discussion, and with Dan being new as well, he's done some assessment of our current needs for that park and equipment. So the request was to come back before this body with a request for additional equipment. Really what he, he feels is needed for the, the needs of our parks. And then you'll also see included in there is a list of our current assets and equipment that we have within the Parks and Facilities Department. This is just the capitalized equipment. This is not your everyday equipment. Shovels, rakes, chainsaws, that type of thing. This is really anything that would be capitalized.
Capitalized means what?
Of a higher value that has depreciation. So with that, I think the RBA spells out some specific equipment that he is requesting. Again, these are ballpark figures. And as we stated in the RBA, anything that's over the threshold will be bid out appropriately, but this is, this gives us a, a, a starting point for additional equipment that would be needed for parks and facilities. And it wouldn't just be for Rec Park. As you'll note in the RBA, we talked, this is going to be able to be used across the township and our parks and facilities everywhere. I don't know if Dan has more to add at this time, or if we want to just take some questions.
I have a question, just a clarification. My understanding is, well, if we approve these, these are like, not to be exceed amounts, but then the, once you get the quotes, those will come back to the board again for approval before purchase. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a huge clarification.
Right. So I think there was a couple of different ways we could have approached it. One, we could have just come back to you one by one as we went out to bid for equipment, but we really thought it would be a better use of time to give you an overall snapshot and picture of what is needed with an estimated cost and ask for that budget amendment to, not to exceed amount, and then where appropriate, go back out to bid.
And they'll still come back to us.
Oh, yes. And if it goes out to bid, it will still come back before this board for approval. So it won't be the last time you hear of it, but this, this paints a good picture as we move forward.
Trustee Shipley?
Appreciate it.
Sure, a couple of comments. First of all, we asked the Director of Parks to evaluate the shortcomings. And it looks like this equipment was addresses the concerns of our residents. And what the Parks Director also considers is required. I don't have any problem with this, and I think that with due diligence, the parks will be in much better shape than what they were in the past. And looking at the old equipment that is still on the books. Every major department, including the fire departments, have reserve engines, reserve equipment. Because even brand new equipment goes in for maintenance periodically. So I have no problem with this, and I'd make a motion when it's appropriate to approve it.
Trustee Rizzi.
I had an opportunity last week to, to meet Dan and to ask him some questions and, and learn about his vision for the parks, and I'm excited for that. It was a good meeting. It was good to, to, to understand where you've been and, and where you want to get us. And, and so I look forward to that. That being said, I, I looked over this list, and there's no questions. This is top of the line stuff. This is a good request. I looked at some of our neighbors, and I just thought I'd, I'd mention a few things here. Lowell Township. They, they lease out their soccer fields to the Lowell Area Soccer Association, LASSO, and they do all the striping needs for those fields, so they don't have to stripe their fields. And Ada Township has a agreement with AYSO, which also handles the same thing. They, they do all of their striping that way, so the township only has to stripe the, the outfield of the baseball fields, they chalk the infield. And they do that with some equipment that costs, you know, less than a couple thousand dollars. Thornapple Valley Baseball League, TVBL, just down the street. They use similar equipment to Ada Township. They, they both either contract out aerrations or rent aerators. East Grand Rapids has striping equipment for its fields. They, they spend less than $10,000 on that equipment to stripe their fields. And so I step back and I look at our park, and while I know we have a large use for our soccer fields at our park, and we have really, we have some, some good soccer fields, but our baseball fields are in really bad shape. And I understand the need for a sand drag and that type of equipment to clean up those, those fields. But my question is, when I compare to the other fields around us, we have no scoreboard, we have no irrigation, we have very poor turf quality, we don't really have much for seeding or lighting out there. Are we better off investing some of this money into, into a more of an infrastructure upgrade, kind of like what we heard about at our last meeting when they did that presentation, along those lines, before we start getting Cadillac equipment out here?
Dan, you can speak to that, please do, but I will say that this came, that was the exact analysis that Dan had, where before we go with the Cadillac version of a redo of the field, give me what I need that the township doesn't have to do proper maintenance that hasn't been done. Aeration, there is irrigation, isn't there some irrigation out there?
Only in the soccer field. To my knowledge.
I think on softball fields too.
But it hasn't been, there was none, none of that regular follow-up that you need to have a decent, it just wasn't done. And so I hear what you're saying. Also, if AYSO is doing the striping, then we're going to be limited to AYSO to strike. They're not going to strike for softball, they're not going to strike.
They're not.
And they're not going to strike with the admin building if that were to come to fruition, like, I don't know. Dan, you're the expert, you talk, but I think that.
Well, you know, part of the issue then is that with our rentals before we rented, we did not charge them fee.
Yes, big issue.
And so in exchange for them using those fields, they, I mean, they needed to strike, so it's my understanding they strike. Moving forward is, you know, the first part of that is when we brought the original proposal about Red Park. The board kind of pushed the brakes on that, and I think we talked about what I can do if I have the equipment. Kind of screws up that part, and then we're going back to the drawing board of what we really want to do at that park.
Because the, the Cadillac version is starting from scratch with a nice park that really just hasn't been maintained.
Correct.
You know, with the, with the, you know, we can talk about the painter, but like with the painter, for example, if we ever want to have lacrosse, or we want to do football camps, or, you know, part of the big picture, what we're trying to do is when we redid parks and facilities, is we're also now recreation. So we want to bring the program and to the citizens of Cascade. So to be able to do different types of programming, if we were going to do a, a football camp, we need to be able to paint that field for football. All right. The painter that I have in there is probably, or what we do, I would say the life expectancy of that is probably, I would probably schedule that out 10 years, for example. The other thing along those lines is, I talked to a guy today, and this was just a ballpark figure. I said, how much would, we have roughly one, two, three, four, five soccer fields out there right now. I said, if you were to, if you were to strike those, and he has a company. I says, what would the cost be? So he said, the cost for him to come to it would be 650 bucks if we pay them every week. Okay? So if you do the math, long-term, all right? If we were to contract that out, it's more advantageous for us to get, get the painter. But in the big scheme of what we're doing is not only, I mean, the painter is for Red Park, but the equipment that's here today. A lot of that equipment will not only be used at Red Park, it will be used within the whole park system. The tractor we can use along our, our bike path system to, to brush on. So there, there's lots of other issues, or there's lots of other
factors.
Things that with this equipment is not as much part of it. Like I said, I think the idea was when we went to the back and drawing board of Red Park, if I have the tools, I firmly believe I can, that's a good start for us. And then we can tie in whatever the new renderings are to what we're doing now.
The striker machine, for the slightly more expensive or more expensive than cheaper models, does it man hours required or anything? Are there other cost issues with?
With?
Savings savings? Yeah, painter, like, does it save time?
It's a painter, it's a comb, or it's a write-on painter. I mean, once you have those lines painted, it, it's very efficient, so. For my biggest place where I was at, we, we had one, so.
What about AYSO? We mentioned that. You guys did, you did the analysis. So up to this point, AYSO has used the fields, I believe, at no cost. And you did a calculation of, had, had we been charging even slightly less than the going rate for what other municipalities and other fields, field space, how much could we have been gathering and that we could put back towards maintenance of the park?
So Cindy Albert, who's our, our coordinator for Parks and Facilities, she did analysis. We were able to, to see what every field was used for 2024, and that would have roughly been about at $25 an hour per field, would have been about $40,000 in rental.
That has just been left on the table?
Just left on the table.
And that's yearly?
Yearly.
I can say as supervisor, I've got, the, the biggest number of complaints are about maintenance of public spaces.
I just have a couple, just maybe their comments, maybe they're not really questions. I appreciate your comparisons, Scott. I just, I'm not so sure, just being a parent of children who've played sports locally, that they're apples to apples. I think, you know, for instance, like the East Grand Rapids, most of East Grand Rapids fields are within their school system. We've played there. So I'm not sure if you talked to Parks and Recs at East Grand Rapids, but I'm sure East Grand Rapids is a very close-knit community. I'm sure that their school system stripes all of their stuff for them, even if they don't.
Parks and Rec Department is handling it.
Even the school?
I, I did not address the schools, just the parks, like Manhattan Park, Remington Field.
Most of the interject, Jan Mazy, who I just saw today, is the Parks Recreation Director. He does stripe all their fields, but even though he's Parks and Rec, he does all the stuff in East Grand Rapids schools.
That's, okay, that, that was my point, I guess, is that.
That's all under his umbrella, not only Parks and Rec, but also.
The school, because all of those fields are all intermingled within the core district within there. It, it's very close. And then when we, is there, when we talk about rental revenue that we've not gotten in the last several years, is there a difference when communities or sports clubs, because I, I've, I've personally gotten emails from parents in the community who are looking for rentals because they sit on a board for a travel soccer team that wants to run out fields, and they're asking how they can run out our fields. Is there differences or a premium that we can charge for our fields if they are all set and ready to go? They're set, striped, ready to go versus having AYSO only rent them and come in and do their own striping?
One of, one of the things that we're working on right now is that we have had, that we're working on, we're just starting on that, is having a rental contract, all right? And then that contract that will state, you know, what the hourly rate is, when they can use it, who can use it. So, you know, any group can come to us and want to rent that. One of the things I want to say is that, one of the things that we've done in the past is, we let soccer groups, if, you know, let's say they're playing in April, May, a little bit in June, you know, either side of that. And then it's important to have a maintenance cycle in the summertime, where, where we may have some camps, or we had camps, or we would have camps, but we're not having that every single day planned, because it's the only way you can give those fields a break and, and get them going good for when fall starts in September and October. You know, I, I truly believe that where it works and the softball field, softball field's fixed, we can get this equipment. I, I truly believe that we can produce a good product and they will come, so.
And just because I don't really know, but the soccer fields are interchangeably called lacrosse and football fields? Are they all the same or no?
No.
Okay.
So, I mean, a soccer field would be different than a, would be painted different than a lacrosse field, would be painted different than a football field.
Okay. So would we, is the thought, I guess, because I know there's need within the community as well, not just for soccer fields, but for lacrosse and football fields. How would, how is, what's the plan to address that? With stripe, are we just going to set them as one and be done?
I think moving forward is, you know, right now we have a, you know, we're going to talk with soccer people, that, you know, if there's, if there's a, a need for a lacrosse field in the future, there's no, there's no reason we couldn't do a lacrosse field. If there's a need for a football field, I haven't got that part, I'll be honest with you, but I know there's those needs out there. I mean, same with the softball fields. Is, we could probably, if they were in good shape, we could be running them all the time. But once again, the first thing we want to do is, is have those, those fields out there, first and foremost, if we're going to run clinics or things for the citizens of Cascade.
Yeah.
Rentals after that come second. So, and, and that's kind of the direction we're going, is we want to do clinics out there, whether it be softball, lacrosse, football, you know, it's going to be a, a slow process, but I mean, this summer, we're going to start somewhere, so.
Is it fair to say the turf field that we saw is one possibility in the proposals for the rec field improvements, that once you do the cost benefit, benefit analysis?
No.
Probably doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
I get, I get you want to play on it, but for us to spend the money on it for Cascade?
Field?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking both a million dollars. Well, you know, I think what we have out there, if we have the tools to do it, we can make it by ourselves.
If I may, just for clarification, I'm not advocating that we don't need striping equipment. I'm just saying, looking at our neighbors, they're using, for instance, a striping machine that costs less than $10,000. And the proposal in front of us is for a $25,000 piece of equipment. So that was, that was essentially my question was, you know, are we, are we stepping a little, a little ahead of ourselves here, especially we don't even think we're renting our fields yet? And then my other point I wanted to make briefly, if I may, I noticed looking at the inventory of mowing equipment that we have, if you figured the hours used on this equipment per week, if you will, and you looked at, say, a 26-week season, it looks like the township runs its equipment around two and a half to seven hours a week. And a 40-hour work week, that might not seem like a lot, but actually it is. Not that, it's, it's not that far off. In the commercial industry, talking with three different business owners in the area, equipment in that arena runs around 12 to 16 hours per week. So it looks to me, so my question is, do we have specific mowers for specific parks, and they don't, like, for instance, do the mower, does the mower that mows Tassel Park stay at Tassel Park and just mow Tassel Park? And the mowers at the Rec Park just stay at the Rec Park?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So we don't trailer the equipment from park to park? It's, we have specific equipment for each location, so to speak?
We, we try to, so we don't have to.
Okay.
So where's the equipment kept that mows this then in the mediums?
Where?
Oh, so that does travel here. Okay. And, and that comes to, does that go to the Memorial Park as well?
Correct.
And does that also go to Tassel Park?
Well, Tassel does have a board there. When they're doing this here, they kind of work towards.
Each other?
Other, you know, I mean, they trailer stuff, they're adding building, so stuff like that.
It's, it's a mix. It's kind of, it's a mix. Okay. Because I, I've seen it, so that's why I wondered when you said that, I'm like, wait, I've seen this stuff moving.
In the, in the future, and I mentioned this at our meeting, and I'll bring it up here, but in the future, I'd like the inventory list to indicate what equipment is, is retired and, and perhaps ready to, to, to leave the township's garage, so to speak, just so that we have a, a, a pretty accurate description. You know, as, as a business owner, we have nine machines, and we mow all of the grass for the city of East Grand Rapids, all of the grass for Ada Township, and 160 residential and commercial accounts. And we do that with nine machines. The township's got a roster here of 14. I understand some of this is retired, some of it is backup, as, as trustee Shipley mentioned earlier, you know, you can back up equipment, but I think to have the whole picture and to have the, the community understand the whole picture, it would be good in the future if we indicate what's, what's being replaced and what's leaving. So it doesn't look like we're just accruing lots and lots of, accumulating lots and lots of e, equipment.
Well, I think with me in this position now, it's the difference that you will see is that when we buy that mower, if we buy that mower, for example, that's on here today, that will be scheduled out. So we will schedule up like that mower would be a five-year. And, and then what I've done in the past is I would schedule up a mower for five years, five years, it still has very good value to it. Instead of sending it auction, when we, when we go out and get the poles for a new mower, we use that as a trade-in, which helps lower that cost for that. So part of the problem with, with lot of equipment, it had to be scheduled out. So anything with, with myself in this position moving forward, is that any equipment we buy, we will schedule that out. And then it will be, then we'll start to get on a replacement program.
Which, which is wonderful, because that's what we see with the fire department as well. And so it's nice for us to be able to see that in the beginning and as we go to see the life expectancy.
In the past, the, the equipment, some of the equipment that was scheduled out that was replaced, never was disposed of or traded in, and it still shows up on this list. And so that's why, right, like even vehicles, you know, the, the dump truck, there was a meeting in here years ago that was being replaced, and here it is, it's still on the list, but I think all of us know that it's on its way out the door, but that's, that's why we need to, we need to make sure that we're doing exactly, and I think now that you're in this position, I, I believe that will happen. It's not your fault that it didn't happen before. I'm not saying that. I just want to be clear to everybody that's watching that we're we're correcting that.
I can't, I can't fix the past, so I gotta melt a hand. Some of the, some of the equipment that.
You and us all, Dan.
It's not, it's not is impractical for what we do, so it's just going to be a shift on how we do it. We need to start somewhere, so.
Thank you.
Trustee first. Well, I've got four questions, Supervisor, if that's all right. My first one is for Dan. This is my ignorance, so you'll have to correct me or, or take me. It's my understanding, like with AYSO, that they will mandate that they stripe the, the field. Is that accurate?
No.
For regulation? Okay. Okay.
Any, any, like clarified from my past position, any rental, there, there was, the agreement was, we, we took care, we striped the field.
Okay, wonderful. And, I mean, you had more soccer events out in, out in Township than, than anybody. So you would, you would be the expert, certainly. And then you said that East Grand Rapids, that Parks Director is doing their, the school and the parks, striping and painting?
That is my understanding.
Okay. And then like, are those fields multi-use? Like they're striping those for soccer and then turning them around and making them lacrosse?
Yes.
Okay.
But thus by now.
Okay.
There, I mean, there.
That's my understanding too.
You know, and they're, 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 their football field is a synthetic field, so.
Sure. So that would not be, yeah. And Scott, what, what did you say the?
Yeah, the middle school's synthetic also.
Stripper cost in East Grand Rapids?
It was like 9,000 bucks.
So I, you have a reputation that precedes you as somebody who makes beautiful fields. I've heard it from several park directors that, like, you're the guy, and which is making me so excited as a Cascade resident. I was put here as a fiscal conservative, so I have to ask the question, like, if you had 120,000 instead of 179, could you make them as beautiful?
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, it depends. I mean, then we go line and line, and then I can explain to you what's most work, what's not. I mean, this is.
One moment. So, but at, at 100 and 100, and I get that these are a round number, but could you get it done for less? I have to ask, and I'll always ask you when you come.
Um, right now, I'm going to stand by what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew, is that only three questions?
It was four. I say, why so EGR, I ask Scott, and I have to get it done for 120.
I missed the Scott one.
No, I wrote them down.
Yeah, I just wanted to wrap up, well, not wrap up, but just make a couple of comments to, I clearly am not the, the parks expert. But I just wanted to remind everybody, and Scott, you hit on a little bit of this, but I want to appreciate Dan's, you know, his expertise and his energy as he dives into this. He's been here 90 days. He's been here ninety days. And on his very first meeting is when we had the survey results from master plan, that this board, the previous board was unaware of what was transpiring. The second meeting was the concept plans for a new rec park, which is what generated this conversation. And this, this, um, these marching orders to move forward with getting this information before you. This is a really quick turnaround time for what was being asked to do an assessment when you're dealing with October. We don't, he's also in charge of facilities, so picking up leaves, making sure we're getting ready for the winter, working with contractors on the leaf pickup, doing everything else with our facilities. So, I guess really what I'm doing is I'm defending Dan and what he's done in the last ninety days. And that, I, I appreciate the, um, the detail of the questions that are going into what is being requested here. But I just want to remind everybody that these are, th- this is from a, um, a perspective of being ninety days in and having a Parks Department that is across the township, only a year and a half old. It just was created in twenty twenty-three. So, the, the priority was never there. So, making parks a priority, I'm super excited that we're going through this process. And I just want you to know, we have purchasing policies in place as well that will come back before the board to make sure that when we purchase these, we are being fiscally responsible. Um, and I think that's all I had. But, oh, and then I guess I had one other comment in regards to the question about, you know, where do, where's the equipment going? Where is it stored? How are we maintaining our facilities and parks? That's all being reevaluated. O- operations across the board are being reevaluated, staffing's being reevaluated. We have come across some, um, some pretty big inefficiencies that were being done, um, that did make a lot of logical sense. Um, I think if anything, in my twenty-some years in local government, um, doing more with less is just kind of been a motto of mine, and that's, that's what we're doing. And we will continue to monitor what we're doing. So, you know, however we end up tonight, I mean, I appreciate the conversation. But I think that, you know, what was what before you is, you know, an expert in the field bringing us information, um, for consideration.
What is the, so we hear the word department, we're pretty lean. Well, how many, what's your crew for the buildings and grounds and facilities, the work crew?
How many do we have right now? I think we have seven or eight.
And that handles the downtown village area, everything, like the whole township, right? Any public spaces?
So, you know, I think what people have realized is that, um, you know, we do burials and cemeterying, that's under my department, um, you know, all parks. Um, so when it's, when there's a snow event, we do the whole white mass system, we, we do all the parking lots. Um, we're responsible for street light maintenance within the township. Um, you know, we, but elections, um, you know, we move election stuff. Uh, we do these days. Um, and then any facility that we have, we try to do that in-house if we can.
All the chairs and everything for every time there's a meeting in the
So, anytime there's a meeting in here, we do the chair down at the center.
And, and I, I know, um, for the new trustees, about six months ago, I had brought forward to the board and got approval for, we had a, a traditional Parks Director position at the time. And to complement that, where we found some deficiencies within the, the township was in the facilities area. So, we really wanted to bring in a facilities coordinator, facilities manager that could complement that Parks piece. We had a change in staffing, which every time there's a change in staffing, I always look at that as an opportunity to reevaluate where we're at and say, what's the best situation for the township? What's the best solution? We got a gem in Dan, cause he has expertise in both of those areas and was able to bring along somebody that also complements, um, what was needed in the township. So, um, I feel like today, everything that he just listed off, and they do more than that. Like, they move desks around. If something needs to get moved, it's, it's their crew that has to do it. So, um, so as we sit here today, it's, it's, the department is, is at a point where it's gonna go nowhere but up. And whatever consideration you can give to this tonight's gonna help.
Any further discussion? Questions?
I'm just ready to make a motion that we approve the equipment purchase as requested.
Support. I just have one more comment. I just want to say, Dan, I think you're doing a great job. You've been handed a lot, and this, uh, I honestly didn't expect to get this this soon. I think it's fantastic that you've been able to provide that information so quickly.
I appreciate that, um, but I will say that, um, my staff, without the staff that I have, I can't do what I do. So, I mean, they've been, they've been kind of wandering around, and now I'm
Sheepdog. Nice work with the budget too, Lorna, because this wasn't anticipated. I mean, it should, it could have been, but it wasn't. But good job with you. It's not a problem. All right, if we do, so we're gonna, not to exceed a hundred and seventy-ish thousand, right? Just tell, so now you're gonna have the equipment you need. Do you think that affects the overall, um, cost of rec park redo or upgrade? Especially compared to the proposals we got, uh, a month or so?
Well, I think, I think now that, that would bring all the cost of that, that project.
Like, I would say honestly, by quite a bit more than a hundred and seventy thousand, if you have what you need, right?
Well, and, and I, I think the
Answer my own question.
Well, and I think this is some of the conversation that Dan and I've had, like, you don't, we don't have, we don't, we don't have the standard, we don't have the standards in our parks that we should. So, once we get there, how do we really know what the demand is? How do we really know what the usage is gonna be? You know, could we be, it, there's so many variables. So, with or without this equipment, there's gonna be improvements to the parks that are just gonna be, um, they're, they're gonna be changing for the community, because they're gonna be much more, they're gonna be more activated. You're gonna be able to solicit more users to the parks, both from the community and from other organizations that can generate some revenue. So, I think that there's, there's lots of different ways you could slice and dice this and look at it. And, um, but at the end of the day, equipment to maintain it is, is vital, regardless of what we spend and how much equipment we get.
Obviously been identified across the board as a community.
Yeah.
I'm excited, because now we'll see movement, and you know, you hear thoughts, questions, frustrations from the public, but this is exciting to now have you here, the leadership, to be able to kind of proactively handle it. So, thank you.
And, and I think trustee Rizzi, when, you know, with your expertise too, there'll be lots of conversation and vetting, sorry. Just, or, you know, before we bring this back to the board, saying, you know, give us, give us your opinion as well. So, it, it isn't like we're bringing this in a, in a silo. We want to make sure that it's good for the community and that when we get here, we've got, you know, the support of of course, we want the support of the board, otherwise we, we don't function. So.
Dan, I'm willing to give you the equipment you're looking for here, but at the same time, I'm gonna walk to the parks barefoot in September.
Another year, maybe twenty twenty-six.
Okay, that's all I wanna hear. Thank you.
So, that was a motion by, okay, trustee Shipley, supported by treasurer Porcange, to approve, um, the purchase as stated in the packet. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
We need to do a roll call? It was kind of fifty-fifty.
No, we're good. No, I think it was two.
Two, yeah, it was two to five.
Okay. Zero, zero, two, twenty twenty-five. Consider approval of special use permit for outdoor storage at thirty-seven hundred Craft. Is this planning director Hendrick?
Yes.
They're trying to get her on a microphone to speak. Lorna, thank you for coming.
I believe so. I can only speak to me. No, I, I will, I don't know. Thank you. Yeah.
I'll, I'll do a quick review on this and then answer any questions that you may have. And also Joel Bodbile is here, who is the representative who operates Lakeland Pallets at thirty-seven hundred, um, Craft Avenue, uh, just north of the airport. Um, so this was an application that came in, um, he had, he had done a zoning verification to ensure that the use was allowed there. However, we did realize and after the zoning verification, that there was some elements of the site that needed special use, uh, permits. And specifically, that was outdoor storage of materials, because outdoor storage may have negative impacts on um, adjacent properties in the zone district. We want to make sure that it's appropriate, so therefore it's special use. Um, Joel has been very cooperative with all of our departments that have been, um, involved in the review of this project. He formerly operated at the site directly to the west of here and has had, um, you know, a good relationship with our fire department, our building department. Um, they've always had a good relationship and they've operated in, in Cascade for years very effectively. Um, they decided that the site, um, when the, I don't remember if it's Coca-Cola or Pepsi, I don't have a preference, when the bottling when the, when the Pepsi plant directly across the street to the east opened up, they took the opportunity to purchase that site and move their site, um, move their operations to the other side. This is in the industrial property, it's surrounded, um, by a mine, kind of to the northwest, to the north, there, they actually own a large parcel and only operate in a very small portion of it, to the north, um. It's primarily forested, to the south, the airport, and then they also have the railroad running on the southern, just, um, just on the very southern property line. Um, therefore, we looked at the outdoor storage for the site and found that it had no, um, negative impact on, on anyone. Um, typically, outdoor storage of material and equipments would need to be a hundred feet from the front setback and fifty feet from the side setback, but because the building was already existing, um, and there was no aggrieved parties, they did bring this to the ZBA for a zoning, um, variance, and were granted a variance. Um, with the condition that they kept all of the existing landscaping and vegetation to the west and the east in place. That was approved, and then it went to the planning commission where, um, it was also approved. So, now we're just at the, the spot where the plan, where the board would make the final decision if the special use for this site is appropriate. Any questions from the board?
Uh, I think, oh, I think there's some typos here, cause I don't think trustee McDonald serves on the planning commission.
But old, I read that fifty times, I think. And I think that was an old case, because the second ed, if you read through it, whoever supported it, remember me, the bottom, is also, I think that's from an old
Well, he's on the ZBA, so I think, I think it's supposed to say ZBA motion, not planning commission motion.
Read that fifty times.
Right. And then the, the motion above it is, I believe, by the planning commission, cause it's member Bruno. And he, uh, I'm on page ninety. And his first, um, condition is the brush be cleared to provide a four-foot buffer to the east edge of the paved lot between the pallets and the woods. I am assuming the intent of that was that that buffer is to be maintained, not just cleared one time. But the way the motion is worded, it would appear that it's just a one-time deal. Do you have any clarification on that or desire for it to be clarified with what we do here tonight?
You could most certainly clarify that, that, um, that request or that condition, actually fire found that that was, um, not necessary. So, whatever the board would like to do with it, with that.
The fire department didn't have a concern with that?
And that's, that's in here deeper, cause I think this, this case was a weird one, cause three of you were on the planning commission. Came the first time in November, December, and then I was on at the final when it was approved. And during that time, there was a lot of, you must have asked a lot of questions during the meeting prior. And then there was a lot of supporting documentation when we finally made the approval. And there was a lot of clarification from the fire department that they were okay with the outdoor storage and the way it was, as is. I don't even think that they requested the, the walk, the walk paths through the, the storage. And, and that is all in our packet eventually, as you go down, there's notices from the fire department on their final decisions afterwards.
So, you guys have seen this at the planning commission level? Just being unfamiliar with it, how, I just want to make sure that we're, so how does trustee, former trustee McDonald and
It's not, this, that's supposed to be
That's zoning appeals motion.
Okay, got it. So, it's simply the typo is that it should be ZBA, not planning commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, I read it over and over, and I'm like, this isn't
Okay. But, okay, I just don't understand how is dumb question, has it been to the ZBA?
Yeah. Yes, it was, it was heard by the ZBA in the motion that, um, is in there, number twenty-four, thirty-eight, seventy-one.
It just makes me hope others.
In the second to the last paragraph from the fire department, it makes it sound like they thought that that was going to be a a buffer on the east side that Ryan was referring to in his motion.
First fire department, I'm not looking at it, what you're looking at. There's two separate fire, and tell me if I'm wrong, there's two separate fire department evaluations. There was one that you guys originally looked at, and then you requested they go back and
This is dated November twenty-first.
Is there one further down that's later?
It would be page a hundred and eleven in your board packet.
That's the one I'm looking at. And in the second to the last paragraph, it says Lakeland pa- plans to build a road, fire barrier on the east side of the boundary to distance the brush and trees from outdoor storage areas. And I think that's built off of the motion that the planning commission made to clear that area. But like I said, their motion doesn't say anything about maintaining it.
It was the other way around. So, this, the fire department had already written this.
Okay.
And the motion from the board or from the planning commission came based on the narrative.
To support this?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need to clean up that language a little maybe so that it's maintained?
Uh, that's gonna go into a special land use approval. The fire department will review this for fire compliance at any time. If you want to have it in here for clarification, you can, but the fire department is, are going to, they're going to be doing this anyway, that's a job.
Okay.
Yes. They will inspect annually. So, I think that the understanding is when they go out and inspect annually, they will make sure that that is maintained. That would, that was my understanding of the planning. The board directs staff to do that clarification. Do we need to specify if it comes from the planning department or the fire department? Yeah.
I would rather that the fire department handle fire department, fire issues.
Sir, would you like to say anything? We'd love to hear from you if you have something, otherwise.
He's very pleasant to work with. I'm always sad when you're approved.
I'll keep it brief.
It's been fun, right?
Yes. I'm learning, so that's always the important thing. First of all, thank you for serving on the board, and a lot of thanks to Andrea and all her help that she's done thus far in helping gain this to where it is tonight. So, family business, we've been in Cascade for almost eighteen years, and we were operating across the street. And so, she did a very nice job laying out why we purchased the Pepsi building across the street from us. And we have been emphasizing on growth. We've grown a lot since we've been in Cascade, and we're looking forward to doing that for years to come. So, this property suits us well for that. We have been operating safely in the township and have had annual fire inspections since we've been here. Obviously, we know that fire's dangerous, so that's a top priority and concern for not only the township, but for our employees and the people that come and support the business. We're continuing to looking to grow, and we appreciate the symbiotic relationship that we've had with Cascade Township. And I would add that in that paragraph that was referenced, the last sentence says that the, the road is not required, but they are choosing to do this to protect their products in the wooded property. So, we are always in, uh, compliance with the, whatever the fire department wants us to do. But we are looking to put that barrier in there and maintaining it will be, we will absolutely do that. So, thank you for your time and for your consideration of our special use permit.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Trustee Shipley?
Here we go again.
I was just gonna try to beat you, but, oh, go ahead.
Considering that the fire department has got a working relationship and all the, uh, uh, i's are dotted and t's are crossed with the zoning, uh, board, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit outdoor storage at thirty-seven hundred Craft. Have you support?
The motion by trustee Shipley, supported, uh, excuse me, to approve the special use permit uh, for outdoor storage at thirty-seven hundred Craft, supported by trustee Rizzi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea, and thank you, sir. Last item, again, that has been removed and the, the memo in the packet on that can be disregarded. Having no discussion items, now is the time for public comments again, uh, whether the statement is on something that is on tonight's meeting agenda or not. Welcome. Something that is on tonight's meeting agenda or not. Welcome. Hello, good evening.
I'm Elizabeth Cramm. I live at thirty-four, ten Winterberry Court, and I want to say that the discussion on the. Equipment purchases was. A good example of why we have government. I appreciate you guys asking about. Um, better pricing and making sure that we're using our money, you know, for the best possible purchase. I think it also says a lot that. Dan said that if he had to do it for lower, he wouldn't, he would just. Not buy one of the pieces of equipment and postpone that, so. I also think that's an indication that he's buying the right kind of equipment that we want. And our parks are our. Focus right now. I feel like that's what everybody's wanting to, um, focus their tax dollars on the most, so. I think that's a great use of money, but also appreciate everybody doing their fiscal. Responsibility. I think the assets can't be removed from the listing due to auditing stuff, but. I just want to point that out too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nick Catzrollis, twenty-nine eighty-five, Berwick. Um, I'll take your answer during the board's comments, but Mr. Nordic, I'm wondering why you, um, voted against. The Parks and Facilities proposal.
Sure.
So.
Is there anyone virtually? Manager comments?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick things tonight. And one of the things that, um. Director Natarini and I mentioned in December and brought to you was the approval for payment of the bills, um, during. The long pause we had between December eleventh and today. I just wanted to point out that on the invoice request for tonight that was approved. You'll see a column to the right-hand side that actually has check numbers, or there's a word none. Anything that's.
I almost brought that up when we talked about the.
Yeah, I was, I was going to, but the, the numbers, the ones that, the payments that actually have a check number associated with them. Are, indicate that the invoices that were paid in the last thirty days. Um, per that request and approval of the board back in December. Anything that has the word none is a current invoice that will be paid tomorrow. So I just wanted to point that out, that we did follow, um, the request, um, and let the board know that that's the indication of what was paid. Um, want to remind everybody out there that tax bills are out. Um, it's that time of year. February fourteenth is the due date. It falls on a Friday. Township offices close at noon, so tax bills are due on February fourteenth at noon. And then I know this is on everybody's mind, and it has been for a very long time. Uh, hopefully, everybody saw the fence that went up around Tuffy, uh, two weeks ago. Equipment was being delivered today. The asbestos inside the building was remediated over the holiday, so demolition has actually started. But it was the internal. And, um, talking to the contractor, we should see the actual building come down Friday of this week and into next week. Depending on the weather and his crew. So, um, that building will be coming down.
Great.
So. That's all I had tonight.
Or member comments? Trustee Shipley, I wonder if you have anything to say?
I always do. I want to thank our bosses for being here tonight. Please come back next meeting and bring your neighbors with you. Without your input, we may not make smart decisions, so. Every young fellow that you got, whether you think it's even valid or not important, it is important to us. So thanks for being. Nick, nice to be here. And.
Kirsty Nordic.
Nick, uh, thank you so much for coming and for your comment. Uh, to answer your question, I voted opposed to it because of the cost. I think it would be done for about twenty percent less. Um, I know that Scott is an example. I'll put you on the spot.
Owns a, a own, uh.
Landscaping company that has less equipment than what's on our asset list, and he maintains townships, parks, systems, a hundred homes, and how many commercial?
Um, sixty or so.
Sixty, so considerably more acreage, more hours. So I think there's, there's ways to get it done. Now with that said, I am immensely happy that Dan is here. Because I, I know what he did in Howland. I spent a lot of time there as a father and a soccer player. And so I, I am excited about what you're gonna do, but always challenge, uh, our departments and spending time, just part of the law.
Thanks.
Yes.
Trustee Randy?
Uh, I would just say I voted the way I did, kind of along the same lines as what Chris is saying. I don't disagree with some of the items on the list, but I do think that if some of the communities around us that have. Their fields being leased and played on by a lot of people and their fields are in much better shape than ours, and they're getting the job done. Or equipment to cost half as much, that gives me pause as to if it's the right time for us to. Uh, acquire everything on the list. And so that's why I, um, if I did. Glad you came, asked the questions. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Clerk Slater? Treasurer Forstang. I don't think so. I was gonna. No, none. None. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley for adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you for coming.
Keep going.